...that happened and then Indonesian Rains where the electronics were made. And very difficult situation that put a lot of, several of the Japanese manufacturers, another manufacturers in the auto industry.
Do you have a question?
Yes, as far as being business on the horizon, do you know what can say to us there?
Let me say this, within the next few weeks, we have a small one before the council here. And I appreciate you folks' help. You've been very reasonable, very helpful on trips, on abatements. This county has too. I just think it's a great partnership right now. Yes?
I think this is something that we need to continue to do, so anybody saying you should continue this. I guess I would appreciate an update on a regular basis about a year.
I'd be glad to.
I mean, I, whether that, in my understanding, we can't do everything always in a manner that because of confidentiality and so forth. So it doesn't always have to be at this meeting or at a normal meeting, so that may be twice a year. But on the alternate orders, that wouldn't hurt to offer, you know, for an individual to be updated or on progress and what plans are coming or not coming out. So we have a little heads up to know what we can anticipate, what might be suddenly put before us and with no forewarning, so to speak. And I don't mean it in the sense of forewarning, but at least some sense of having the context. All of a sudden it's here, we have no context.
I'd be glad to do that. The county asked me if I will give them sort of a quarterly update. I'd love to do that here. And also, if you, you know, come, if you, if you have time and you want to, my office is down the hallway, come in, we can, I can give you an individual update. He's sworn to secrecy because he's on the board. But, you know, there are some things that are confidential, as you certainly understand. But I try to be more transparent, probably than a lot of economic development people do. After a while, you know, things start sounding alike to you and it's not quite as unique as the project thinks it is. But I'd be glad to talk to any of you, you know, contact, just drop by.
I think quarterly report to the council, you know, that's, that would be sufficient.
I prepare one for the county, so I'd love to-
At the same time as you could stop in and talk to us also.
I think that's an excellent idea. I'd be glad to. I like talking to you guys about it.
We'd like to listen.
[laughing].
I've got news for you guys as well.
Hey guys.
You have questions, council? Mr. Collins, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, folks.
Next item on the agenda is Main Street Greensboro, Sarah Robinson. Stephanie.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Crest. I'm the president of Main Street Greensboro. David Myers is the immediate past president and Sarah Robinson is our new executive director and Brian Burns is former executive director. He is here for reinforcement in case there's a question you ask that we can't answer. I'm still learning. I feel like I learn something new every week about this role, so bear with me. I would like to provide sort of a highlight reel of what we've done in 2013 and Sarah will provide what we look to do in 2014. Like I said, we saw a change in executive throughout 2013. We received applications from all over the United States and our search committee spent many, many hours reviewing the applications and conducting interviews on the phone and in person, and it was exhausting, but it was also encouraging to know that with that many applications, Main Street is a very relevant, well-known program that people would like to be associated with. I believe one of our biggest accomplishments this year is that, in large part with the help of Brian, that we aided and facilitated a housing tax credit application to renovate the Decatur Apartments, the old YMCA and the North Street Apartments. This was about two years in the making, so it took a long time to come to fruition and it is actually still obviously in progress. But that application was granted and its estimated investment will be $8 million right in our downtown, plus upwards of 50 new housing units to add to the district. We contributed to that by actually physically taking the investor through the buildings. Brian did that, helping write the application, presenting, pledging Main Street Greensboro facade grant funds. And Brian continues to be in contact with the investor there. And Sarah will actually be a huge investment and a piece as we move forward because she has a background and experience in historic preservation. So that is very exciting. We hope to see construction phase beginning on that in the fall. Another huge accomplishment is that we applied for and received a federal grant from the USDA to equip our farmers market, as well as actually, I think, three or four other farmers markets, to be able to accept food stamps or SNAP credits. There are actually very few markets in Indiana that do this, and so we consider ourselves to be on the leading edge of this trend. And it caught on like wildfire at our farmers market. It was very exciting to see, to be able to actually use that equipment and cash in those tokens was awesome. We, I think we processed nearly $800 in SNAP credits. And so that was just a really great way to keep that money local and as well to encourage people to eat healthy. In conjunction with those farmers markets, we have continued success with our second Friday movie series. That happens right downtown, right on the courthouse lawn. And it's just a fun, kind of family-friendly way on Friday night to encourage people to just be downtown, be social with people in our downtown, you know, visit the stores. And some of our businesses downtown have participated, they'll bring popcorn out. And so I know they're encouraged to see us down there and to be bringing people downtown. Sarah will probably highlight new ideas we have for 2014 that will hopefully make that even a bigger success. And you might have seen downtown, we've begun to sell commemorative benches and it's a great addition downtown. They look very nice. And in conjunction with the Historical Society, we have put together a book called Reflections. It just contains a snapshot of Greensburg over the years. It's a very nice book, well put together, and it contains pieces by local authors as well. It's a local publisher, so we tried to do as much locally as we could. And we've also made this available on our brand new website, so it's very exciting for us. We just continue to coordinate events downtown, like the Fisher Five Mile and the Holiday Walk. Those continue to grow and even despite bad weather and having to actually cancel the Holiday Walk and reschedule on weekday, we saw a bunch of people downtown. Our stores were open, had contests and prizes to get people in the stores, and it was a highly successful event. I just think most importantly, we continue to be a liaison between the city and our downtown merchants and businesses. And we continue to work with the city on issues such as landscaping, cleanup, and decorating. And we will be taking those Christmas decorations down very soon. We believe the city, we benefit the city by bringing businesses downtown, focusing on those small businesses and keeping them relevant, and always thinking about the quality of life here in Greensburg and keeping our downtown alive, which we believe are all wonderful investments and activities.
As far as our plans for 2014, for fundraising, we hope to better promote the street bench program to get them on Main and Franklin Streets, which are now in Washington and Broadway. And we also hope to expand the street furniture fundraiser to include trash receptacles and possibly collaborate with the Co-Greensberg People of Queensburg, which happens in April. Hope to work with them to try to make that happen. We will continue our merchandise sales and, as Stephanie mentioned, they are going online very shortly. I just need to make it by. As far as increasing our revenue for the year, we hope to introduce that, either a farmer's market vendor fee or seek donations from the vendors to further promote programs there. And we hope to maybe gardening demonstrations or fitness classes and all, other activities to help get people and bring more people downtown for the market. We also want to introduce a sponsorship program for events to help increase those and have more activities go on. And basically expand the list of who we solicit for sponsorships. I know we've been repeating with you, thank you for the past user and hope to get more there. And we want to create a donation program as well. It would be kind of like a membership program, but it's not a membership. It would just be, I know in the past we solicited donations and it turned out very well for us, so I want to try to do that again this year. As far as the programs, we are co-hosting a small business development seminar with The Chamber called Staying Relevant to a Changed Customer in this February. It's our first collaboration with The Chamber on an event. We're hoping for a good turnout. We also hope to create a lecture series geared towards new small business development. We haven't done too much planning for this yet. We just had a small discussion about it, basically teaching, if anyone's interested in opening a small business, giving them lessons on finances and business plans. We also want to grow our low interest revolving loan program by inviting more banks to join us. And we hope to continue the facade improvement grant program and continue to grow that as well. We also want to create a program to make vacant storefronts look a little better. We hope to partner with the Community Foundation on this day as they express an interest and put vinyl posters up in the storefronts to kind of get rid of the emptiness that some of them feel and then maybe like a historic image on them, something of what the building used to look like to show the potential that the building has. And we would like to work with local officials to write and implement a minimum maintenance ordinance for downtown if possible. That would help some of the broken glass that we see in the alleys from broken windows and landlords and building owners who had to be responsible for making sure that that was cleaned up and maintained properly. As far as our media promotion, we hope to increase that. I now have a monthly column in the Daily News. I hope to do something with the radio as well. And we are starting a monthly online newsletter where we feature two local businesses in that newsletter. For events this year, we're going to continue the farmers market and we hope to expand on the second Friday events by creating an activity that kind of continues the end of the market to dusk when the movie starts because there's kind of an empty space there. And I feel like that's a really great opportunity for us to keep people downtown, get them into stores, get them into restaurants for dinner in that in-between period. We also have the Fisher Five Mile. And for the Holiday Walk, I'm hoping to update the decorations and get LED lighting for the lampposts. Apparently we don't have that. And then something new in the works that we started last week is a new festival for downtown. I think we've been talking about this for a few years, that's what I've been told, is a tenderloin festival. Tourism here is on board, as is the Indiana Foodways Alliance and the Tenderloin Connoisseur of the Midwest right here is very excited to help us put this on. And I believe you were all emailed a artwork plan for 2014, which is a little more detailed than what I just gave you.
Do you have any numbers in relation to how many new businesses were started downtown this year in relation to how many failed?
This year, we broke even. We have four new ones open up and I believe four have closed. But I came in September, so I think those went up.
You do the facade grants, things of that nature too. That's something that has transpired in the last few years where both two groups, there's still two groups with different names and different, different goals and the foundation being one of them assists the Greensboro district. So that's working well. The membership has become much younger, but we have a big mix now. What you give monthly is very good information. And I'd like to request you, if we're able to break to the council, that show numbers like you do monthly, if they are good, please put your information that you pass out. Questions, council? I guess you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Next item, Melissa Foist, Bread of Life.
Hi, Melissa Foist. I'm Kim Porter and I'm here on her behalf. I guess I'd like to start representing the Bread of Life and I'd like to start by telling you a little bit about 2013, what has happened and kind of where we'd like to go. In 2013, our numbers increased as far as number of meals served in a day. We've increased to where we serve like between 330 to 380 on a Monday or Wednesday. And on our Thursdays, we serve between 125 and 200, the difference being that on Thursdays we don't do delivery routes. We have leveled off as far as the number of patrons we have served, it was around 1,420. I think that's part of that is we're seeing, although we're seeing constantly new families every month, so we're between 12 and 30 depending. I think a lot of them are just coming to us because they need us in an emergency, because they've lost their job or they're trying to make the grocery sale stretch, which is kind of different for us because we've always had the consistent people that were our patrons. Now we're seeing more people depend on us in different ways, so that's kind of encouraging. We've also partnered this year with Gleaners starting in October, which, when they went through the interview process with us and they came down to our facility, pat on our backs, they were so impressed with us. They actually told Melissa that we should probably be a model for soup kitchens for other people that want to start soup kitchens because she's, she's got it so well organized and our policies and everything in place and how clean it is. And so I think as far as City Greensboro goes, we should be very proud of that. So we started that partnership with Gleaners and with that partnership, that's opened more doors for us because we used to just basically rescue from Walmart and maybe a few other places. And now we're rescuing from Main Street Market and Aldi's, Kroger's and Chevyville. Now we're on that list and so they call us when they have these. So that means when we receive that, now we get to be the distribution point to get that back out to other agencies and it's not just for us. So you go to Human Services or the Agave Center or the Food Pantry in Batesville or wherever we can get those things to. We also, without getting other things, we used to just get like baked goods and produce. And now we're seeing meat and canned goods and things like that. So we're really encouraged for that. The other thing that we did this summer is we partnered with the YMCA with their summer lunch program for that end of the city. And we felt like it was a good start and we'd like to continue doing that with them. I think the other thing that we're really wanting to do this year, we hired a new employee that comes from the restaurant world. And Melissa and Sarah are talking about wanting to really train some of our patrons that are interested in getting jobs in the restaurant and food industry and kind of moving forward with not just serving our patrons food, but also giving them opportunities to get jobs. So we're really kind of looking in different areas to see what else we could do. And we're working on other things, so I'll kind of decide about that. Is there anything else? Any questions for me? I feel like everybody knows what soup kitchen is about.
Counsel, questions, concerns, comments? Have you considered freely offering to those who can afford to contribute something?
Yes. We, we have a donation jar, so it's interesting that sometimes they'll put in a dollar or two. We also meet patrons that'll say, we want to come back and volunteer, and they do. They'll, and we've also seen a lot of, it's amazing to me, especially men lately, that have come in because they need help, they've been unemployed or laid off. And they will, they can't, they've always worked, so they want to give back and they want to do something. So they'll work consistently, three days a week at the soup kitchen if they can. And that's really encouraging because because they're doing that, most of them have already gone back into the workplace. So that's kind of what we're seeing different, not people just needing us and taking, I don't want to say taking advantage, but they're, they're wanting to be self-sufficient and they're wanting to move forward. So now I think that's probably why our number is probably stabilized where it's at.
How many meals do you serve a year possibly? That's your serving, 150 patrons.
Yeah.
That's multiple times, correct?
Yeah. I didn't have that number in there.
1500 people, how many times would they?
Yeah, that's, that's the total number of, you know, different people. Yeah. So we, I think we're getting ready to, by the time we probably get to September of 2014, we'll reach our 200,000th meal. And it's going a lot quicker because we've reached the 100,000 mark in 2010. So we weren't reaching, we're serving a lot more meals.
Be nicer if you could, just sense of.
Something. The other new thing that we did do this year, we put in a donate now button on our website and that went in effect in October. So I'm kind of excited about that. It's another way to donate and to reach out, so. And actually, our donations, 60% of our donations are from individuals or organizations or businesses. And then the other 10% comes from our fundraising. So then the 30% comes from grant spending, right? And if we added in our food that's donated, pretty much takes care of 98% of our need as far as the food because only 2% of our budget goes towards food costs. The rest of it's basically salaries, which is what we're requesting funding for our salaries.
Do you have a processor there? Do you people that come in to get, do they have to sign in?
They do have to, yes, they do have to sign in and, and tell us why they're there and, you know, how many people are in their household and things like that. We are, because some things are happening with the United Fund and their, we're an agency of the United Fund, they're looking at, possibly looking at stats a little differently. Impact, so we, we're going to have to rethink how we get information from them so that we can see what kind of impact that we're having on them and on our community. So those things are in play for us this, this year, how we're going to get that information out of them and how, so we can see how we're impacting the community.
Is there any way to track if they currently have, have jobs, laid off?
We, we do ask that question. We ask, are you on a fixed income because you're elderly or you're disabled? Are you low income, meaning you have a job, but it's not enough to support your family or completely unemployed? Those are, and some of, and the other question we ask them is, are you coming because of a health-related issue? Because a lot of times we'll get people that are just coming to us just in an emergency because they've got medical bills or they're going through chemo or things like that and they can't, they don't have the extra money or they can't make the meals for themselves. So we're also there for them. Yes?
Couple of questions, just to follow up on that, what you were describing. You know, it seems like a lot of, oh, tracking, I guess.
Yes.
If you're already, if you're already doing it, it would be kind of interesting to know how that's been the last couple of years.
Right.
Seeing what other kind of trends are there. It would be interesting to see that, if you would be with us at some point.
If you'd like, I could probably have it to you by Monday, as you're meeting Monday here.
Yeah, I don't know that it's that critical.
Okay.
For me.
Right.
The others, I don't know. But I have a couple of questions here. In terms of your, your, contribution, your, your actual budget for 2013, your contributions general, does that include the amount of money that the city contributes?
The amount of money the, the city contribute, one hundred grants. So you contribute $5,000 to that one hundred.
Okay, so the 60,000 is really coming from, in this last year, is really coming from the general public?
Yes.
Very good. And the special events or fundraisers that you hold where you invite the public in for that to?
We actually added a new fundraiser this year. So we, we do the turkey noodle dinner, which will be coming up here in March, but then this year we added the homemade noodles, which we sold during the holidays. And so that was pretty successful. We'd like to, you know, do a little bit more. We actually ran out of noodles, so we probably could have sold more. And then we, we have like, you know, restaurants that sponsor night for us and things like that, so those are fundraisers.
Great. And then under the grants, you, 30,000 total was last year. This coming year, you've got zero down.
That's because we don't know what we'll be getting from, well, we know what we're getting from the United Fund. So actually, that's the 23,000, I guess that should, that would be part of the grants.
So that was in that, that's my question, was that in the grants last year?
That's in the grants from last year, yes.
And what was that amount, was it the same?
They gave us 20,000 last year.
Twenty and then five, so 25 of the 30 was from the United Fund and the city, correct?
Yes.
And then the other five, plus or minus 20 bucks?
The Community Foundation and REMC.
Okay.
And another special grant from the United Fund.
Okay, very good. So this coming year, you've increased your general contributions by 27,000 dollars roughly, based on?
Hope and prayer. No, I, I, I-
Well, that's a reasonable answer, I think.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But now, do you have, I mean, what, it's a reasonable answer.
It's a reasonable, yeah. And in our budget too, is, it's kind of, our expenses were, let's see, it's consistent with last year of what my projected budget was, but what brought in. And by the time we got to the end of the year of how much we actually expensed and how much our income was, it was, it pretty much matched up. I think we were like $2,000 off of what we brought in and what our expenses were. So we're pretty much spending what we bring in.
Yeah, so your revenue, the actual, the 66, 27, is really through December?
Yes.
And what you're anticipating this next year, you are hoping that you can increase donations from the general public?
We're hoping.
By some strategies that you're going to be working on?
Yes.
The special events roughly the same amount?
Mm-hmm.
And the 23 from the United Fund?
Yes.
So you, you put together this budget without the city's dollars included in, correct?
Correct. Because we didn't want, we're requesting funds and so I don't have it yet, so I don't want to depend on you if that's the case.
I understand that. I, my, in this listing though, you had the amount requested from you, that fund is 23, so I didn't know if that was a request or if that's-
Well, that's because, we, because-
Actual.
Yeah, that's the actual amount that's coming in this year from that. So like when I do the, in February, I'll get a grant application for, from the United Fund and it's for 2015. So when I go, they'll tell me how much they're going to raise to us.
You'll know before the following?
Yeah, we will know how much we're getting from the United Fund. Yeah.
Okay. All right. And as far as other grants this coming year, outside of the city, where else are you planning to?
We will probably, we usually do the Community Foundation for special projects or, you know, if we need special- know, if we need special equipment or things like that, because that's the kind of things that they fund, and United Fund, if they offer another special project grant, we'll apply for those as well, and those kind of help us purchase our supplies and things that we need, and R E M C is the same way, and if anything else would come up, we'll probably ask for that. We've already asked for a sponsorship, they're on it, for our volunteer bank this coming year, so we're just kind of waiting to see what happens with that. Okay?
So, if you currently have five employees, you want to hire additional?
We would like to hire one more at least.
For a three-day?
Rescue driving and delivery, because we've, now that we're with Gleaners, we, one of our employees that's supposed to be there is getting taken out, and so, we're scrambling to get the food made and things like that, because we're counting on a employee, but now we have to, in the middle of the day, and we have to say, "We're rescuing food," and we would really like that sixth employee to help.
Sorry, are you seeing me?
Yeah. It would be very part of, I mean, we were thinking just the, someone who was retired that would be willing to do a try.
Any other questions, Counselor? End of, so last year, you had building improvements, you had $0%. What is the improvement that's going to be?
I don't, right now, we don't need any building improvement as far as on that building, so that's usually a line item that the United Fund sticks in the budget line, and so, right now, I'm putting zero on it, but that doesn't mean in the future, I won't need money in that line item, so.
14, 2014 expense?
I put it in there in case we need it, but it may not, we may not need it there, and we'll put it in another line item, so.
Anything else, Counselor? Thank you very much. Next, Catch a Ride?
Hi, I'm Carissa, just want to thank you for your past support, and we're requesting that you continue to support us this upcoming year. The funds would be used as match for NDOT's 5311 grant. We're required to have one-to-one match, so in terms of us becoming self-sufficient, for us, it's not really possible, however, we always do look for, you know, new sources of revenue, that sort of thing, new partners, increasing medicaid trips, that sort of thing. Just to give you a little bit of background myself, I'm relatively new, I've been there about nine months now, so I'm kind of new to this process. Since I've been there, we've restructured our routes a bit. A lot of what we do, especially in Decatur County, is for the shelter workshops, and that's for Decatur services industries and the, and the passengers that have disabilities and things that need to get to work there, and so what we did is, we were finding that that was really kind of taking over our services that we're offering in the town, so what we did is we separated those routes from the actual town and county routes to free up a bit of availability and give that back to. Also, what we've done is we've had a change in our fare structures, so up to five miles is 75 cents for those who qualify for reduced rate, which is anyone who is over 60, under 13, or has a permanent disability, and then it's 25 cents per mile for the other five miles, and then for the standard fare, it's $1.50, so we raised that by 25 cents, which, you know, we felt was fair, and the other thing that we added to that is the 25 cents per mile, because we found that we were having a lot of really long-distance trips, and just having one set fare for that was just not really feasible for us any longer, so compared to a standard sort of $2 per mile that you would get with a taxi or something like that, we're still, you know, very affordable service for the clients. In 2013, we provided 15,618 trips within Greensburg, so that's roughly 1,300 a month, so it's a very relevant service here in your hometown. Any questions?
Questions or comments?
I'll just make a question, I think I understand and know the answer. This, this does serve as a match, maybe?
Yes. Yes, yeah. And the other thing, I think there's a bit of a misconception about Catch a Ride in that, in that we are only for the disabled or elderly, and we're not, we're actually public for the general, transportation for the general public, anyone can use our services, we offer service Monday through Friday, six to six. All that you have to do to get a ride is call, and we take, we take reservations up to seven days in advance, so people can plan ahead. It's first come, first served, apart from those individuals who want a subscription, which is a long-term guaranteed trip for those individuals going to the shelter workshops and that sort of thing.
And Miss, what's your name?
Erin Capra.
I didn't know, sure enough.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Free to go. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Erin. Well, the City Council will review these, and you're welcome to attend the council meeting, decision will be made February 3rd. Anything you've forgotten, that you want to pass on, just drop by or email to me at mayorcityregis.com, and if you have any questions, we'll receive them. Counselor has any questions? Anything else on the contribution request? One thing I'd like to bring the Council up on that happened last week, two members of the Tenth Board, and the engineering firm, and the city engineer, had mailed letters to residents of Lickens Way area, explaining the design and whole, I don't know if these are in the agency, and asked if they had any concerns or comments, and the presentation, it was a very good presentation, and it was accepted very well by the residents in that area, some things they see on markets want to be improved by training, which are things of that nature, and the, just the makeup of the street itself, with the fence or shrubbery, things in that area, street lighting, you know, we're pleased with it, so that's a good start, positive feedback from the residents, so I'm going to bring you up there, but it's late. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor. I've heard surrounding counties get suspended trash pickup because of the cold, power weekend on that over the next couple of days.
You think this is the D C R E area? No. I did contact a D C R E today, and I spoke to Mr. Lightwood as well, the newspaper, to let people know that it is going to be very cold tomorrow, we all know that, and trash pickup is important, but it's not imperative that we haven't done in a timely manner, but so what they, we have done is rescheduled the workshop to where they can come in 7:00 A.M., like I always do, maybe a little bit of snow pile going on, a lot to make this work done on equipment, and they will take it early lunch at 11:00 A.M. to 12:00, and then they'll start trash pickup, and still get on Tuesdays trash pickup in time, if they want it. So, we'll see what happens, what the forecast is going to be for sure, and we may repeat the same thing, it's important people's trash picked up, but it's not the most important thing, a lot of people's stuff is important, yeah. The utilities force them to work outside as necessary, and on a rotation basis, keep everybody safe, that work up, broken water mains and things of that nature, of course, the police and fire have to turn the building, there's a place.
We're closed.
Closed.
Yep, closed.
Water's been shut off, yeah.
I have a question on, when we go red, what are businesses supposed to do? I know it's a discussion, it's, we're not, you don't have to have employees come in, but businesses need to shut if we go red.
What our concern is, businesses should have people be able to come in and maintain the facility, that is what it's supposed to be for. People are not supposed to be coming in and doing business as usual, that's why it's red, and as you know, the city of Greensburg, the streets are pretty passe, pretty good shape, but very unlike the county, which is open, a lot of loose snow, a lot of wind, a lot of drifting, a lot of cars with stuff, and that's the main thing, is to keep the people off the roads, and venturing out in those areas, where people out in those areas trying to make it to the city, get stuck on the way and impeding the progress of the county, trying to clear the roads, so we would like to have people stay home, you know, I mean, like I say, Greensburg was good to go, but Greensburg is also in the county. The county commissioner, commissioners signed the declaration that it was emergency situation, and we assistance should abide by that, abide by that, and if people in the industry or business has to have people come in, do maintenance, to maintain, make sure the, something doesn't blow up, or go downhill, or water peat, or ice, freeze and burst, things of that nature, we understand, there's a situation that we have to deal with, and first-person personnel, that's given, but it's not intent to be on red, and business will as usual, and some companies are still asking people to bring in proof that we were in on the red to excuse their absence, and those companies are in Greensburg, so they should have known that we were on the red, it should not have been enticing people or landing them to come to work.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, it's kind of frustrating for the county people, to try to go out and plow the roads, and they have to stop and call a recrere, drag the vehicle out, maybe damage the vehicle, so they can proceed. You know, of course, we're here in Greensburg, hopefully this wind and stuff is done with, thank goodness that there's enough warm temperatures yesterday to kind of melt the surface, and so we don't have much loose snow on top, and all this drifting with the winds. It's been a trying winter, you know, we kind of average our, we have a lot of salt usage, and we probably had, I realize, maybe 15 ton in the existing building, and both of your large enough for the housing, so we have 50 ton coming tomorrow, and it's about 65 ton, and we have another additional 50 ton within our contract, and that's usually enough for a normal year, and as you know, this is not the normal year, some people have underestimated their usage, they're already out, they're 50% more than their original cost to sell, our cost is about $60 a ton. 50,000 tons of, so, you know, basically do the job that we need for years like this, you're talking about $50,000 just for salt and sand, and then you have to have a place to house it, for example, the sand, we had that first, cold spell, it rained first, and it froze the sand, and we couldn't spread it, and we had to break it up first, and a couple of work, so we do need larger facilities to just cover, to keep an eye on the roads. You know, I would like to, well, we have enough, if we empty out this year, we want to buy what we should need next year, and with 72 miles of roads that we have, and we have a contract for that amount, but you have to have enough to store, store it at the end of the season, because if you don't store yourself, the church will bring you to a self-destroying place here. And the second year, we have, it's trying, and the street department, they've worked a lot of long hours, cold weather, bucket, breaking down, and we can't keep things rolling, it's, you've been fortunate, always been hurt, so very fortunate. Well, all of them, all of them have done a great job, Streets Department, City Department. It's been trying to, there's a way, the employees do a great job. Anything else, Counselor? For the, open up for public discussion, if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll ask one simple question, because I just didn't catch the amount. Catch a Ride was how much in matching funds?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.